I'm going to call this meeting, the Oskaloosa City Council. Today is Monday, excuse me, Tuesday, July 5th, 2016. Let's start with the invocation by Pastor James Tower, College Avenue Friends Church.
Well, gracious God, we thank you for our city. We thank you for the great people you have here who are working tirelessly to make it better, to improve the lives of people in our community, to make sure that justice and truth and goodness flow from this place. And I just pray, Lord, that you would help us as this meeting comes together, that we would seek unity in the midst of our diversity, that we would be the people who are attentive to you and who just seek the wisdom and seek the prosperity of this place that you've called us to be. And so I just pray, Lord, that you would help us work through the issues involved and work together and come together for the sake of the greater cause and the greater people here in this place. And I just ask that you bless this meeting. In Jesus's name we pray.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. To join me in the place of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Burnett?
Yes.
Calderick?
Here.
Jimenez?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
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 Okay, thank you. Getting into the meeting here, the first item up is community comments. This item is reserved to receive comments from the community for concerns whether or not they're included on the current agenda. The community is encouraged to come and speak before the mayor and city council. We do ask that you keep your statements brief. That is defined to three minutes. Any questions are to be asked of the city staff, the council members, or the mayor prior to speaking to the full council. Gives us a chance to properly research and perhaps answer the question away from the meeting. Comments are to be directed to the mayor and city council people only. Is there anyone who would care to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on. First or next is the consent agenda. These items are pretty much routine in nature. Do we have a motion supporting it?
A moment.
Okay, any discussion?
I got two quick questions. On our monthly bill to Beanster and Kim, is that an unusual month? And maybe that's really more than a month? Because if you take 12 times that number, it's kind of a big number.
I pulled the, oh, I pulled the, I don't know if I could. It's the daytime. Well, that's why I had to do it in general. It's a, it's a.
It looks like for this year, it has been one of the peak seasons. Usually by, yeah, you've got the central high sedation, which is, which is a major construction, and the hospitals, and often the schools were doing the solar. So these are major commercial activities. Usually residential activities don't have this much volume, please?
Okay, so, I don't want to bore your mouth of kids, but it won't, it's not going to, we don't think it would be an average. Because, you know, $130,000 if you take a ton of foam. Okay, thank you. The next question is, on the concrete work for Hy-Vee parking lot, number one, is that the West parking lot?
That is, that is.
Okay. And the concrete work is above and beyond the asphalt contract for the parking lot?
Yeah, definitely.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Moore?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Calderick?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item six is the openings that we have on various boards and commissions. First is the airport commission. We have one vacancy to fill upon appointment for an unexpired term ending on December 31st of 2021. This is a five-member board that typically meets on the first Monday of the month. Currently, we have four males and no females serving, one vacancy. Next is the historic preservation commission. We have three vacancies. One vacancy to fill upon appointment for a term ending on December 31st of 2018, and two vacancies for alternate members. This is a seven-member board with two alternate members that meets as needed. Currently, we have four males and two females serving. Three vacancies, two alternate members. Municipal housing agency. It's one vacancy to fill upon appointment for an unexpired term ending on February 28th of 2017. It's a five-member board that meets quarterly. Two males and two females currently serving, one vacancy. And finally, the housing trust fund committee. That vacancy, one vacancy to fill upon appointment for an unexpired term ending on January 31st of 2017. We have five at-large members that serve on the committee that meets every other month. Two males and two females currently serving, at-large, one vacancy. Moving on to the regular agenda, 7A. First item is a public hearing. It's on considering a resolution levying a special assessment against private property for cleanup of a property located at 513 South H Street. Here in the city of Oskaloosa, in accordance with section 8.08.080 of the city code, it's time for the hearing on special assessment against property owned by Gary Mitchell for city cleanup of the property. A certified notice of the hearing was sent to the property owner, and notice of the hearing was published in the Oskaloosa Herald prior to the public hearing date. Looking back at the resolution, I believe it's in the amount of $441. So I'll open the public hearing at this time. Is there anyone who would care to speak to this? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Do we have a motion supporting the levying of the special assessment?
A moment.
Okay, any discussion?
This wasn't for weed cutting. This was just waste removal, is that correct?
No.
Correct. That was for waste removal, garbage removal.
Thank you.
I have a quick question. The code says if it's not performed within a reasonable time, what do we consider a reasonable time, if you're asking?
Generally, when a notice gets posted, the notice usually gives some timeframe for when it needs to be done. It's not just, they knock on your door and say, "Do this within a reasonable time." The notice is generally stated timeframe.
Yeah, typically, our notices will cost one or three days. They have three days to contact, to make contact back with the fire department. From that point, we'll go back out. If they need time to get it cleaned up, we'll obviously grant that. It can be up to 10 days, two weeks. This individual property never made contact back with us. We forwarded on to the city attorney, and subsequently, they'd been, they'd had previous violations, so we went ahead and utilized the abatement procedure because they had done a problem property before.
I just think it's important, because we've met before, I just think it's important that the public knows that we're trying to do our best to make Oskaloosa look better, and you're willing to work with folks to make that happen. In other words, it's not do it now or else. You're willing to work with them, or else we'll give you some sort of a plan as to what they're planning to do. I think that's important that the folks know that. All right, thanks.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Percy?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Calderick?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item B is consider a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a development agreement by and between the city of Oskaloosa and Intraco Incorporated, also doing business as Cable Bay. The city has received a proposal from Cable Bay in the form of a proposed development agreement pursuant to which, among other things, Cable Bay would agree to operate an expanded facility within the Oskaloosa amended and restated urban renewal area and meet certain requirements relative to employment retention and creation. The agreement further proposes that the city will make up to four consecutive annual payments of economic development grants to developer pursuant to Iowa Code Section 403.19. The cumulative total of all such payments not to exceed the lesser of $16,000 or the amount accrued under the formula outlined in the proposed development agreement under the terms and following satisfaction of the conditions that are set forth in the agreement. Iowa Code Chapters 15A and 403, which is known as the Urban Renewal Law, authorize cities to make grants for economic development in furtherance of the objectives of an urban renewal project and to appropriate such funds and make such expenditures as may be necessary to carry out the purposes of the chapter and to levy taxes and assessments for those purposes. The council has determined that the agreement is in the best interests of the city and the residents thereof, and that the performance by the city of its obligations thereunder is a public undertaking and purpose in furtherance of the plan and the urban renewal law and further, that the agreement and the city's performance thereunder is in furtherance of appropriate economic development activities and objectives of the city within the meaning of Chapters 15A and 403 of the Iowa Code, taking into account factors set forth there. And this is an opportunity for a public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak to this?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Andrew Jensen, current director of the Oskaloosa Community Development Group. I just wanted to speak in support of this from an economic development perspective. I've been working on this project with Cable Bay for quite a long time, and I know many members in the community have been working on it well before me. Cable Bay is a dynamic company. They do business across the United States and around the world, and we know that they have options of where they would locate and had serious considerations elsewhere. And so I think this is a great opportunity for the city to partner with a business here in the community that adds significantly to our economic base, who frankly has interests elsewhere, but also has a commitment here in Oskaloosa. They want to grow their business here. I've worked quite a bit with Phil and Gary Hall, and they want to make this happen, and I think they're excited that the city is willing to partner. They're certainly a growing business, and we know that they export millions of dollars of product all over the place, so that's outside revenue that's coming in. We also know that their client base is really diverse, spanning manufacturing, agriculture, aquaculture, food industry as well. So all of that adds to just the diversity of our economic base and makes us a stronger community as a whole. They're a quality employer, provide many, many good jobs in the area, and I guess just with all those reasons, certainly support the resolution that the city is making to partner with Cable Bay.
Thank you, Mr. Jensen. Is there anyone else who would care to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Do we have a motion in support of execution of the development agreement?
A moment.
Second.
Okay. Any comments or questions?
How do we keep track of the employees they add?
Mayor and Council, they, the employer has to certify to us the number of employees each year, or the year.
Close up to them.
Yes.
So I have a question around that. In section 2.6, it says they'll add four full-time, and then they talk about two additional full-time. So that's a total of six, if I'm reading correctly.
I think the four is total, and they add two at a time, two in one year.
Is that what it is?
That's what I read.
Okay, yeah. I couldn't read that.
It's for that.
Yeah. Is that what it means?
It's open for four.
Because, yeah, when they, back there, they talk about the hot floor pools, the way to track those. Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Walling?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Calderick?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item C is consider a resolution approving the planned specifications form of contract and estimated cost for the West Mall, also known as the Hy-Vee Parking Lot Rehabilitation Project. City of Oskaloosa Engineering Division staff prepared the plans and specifications for the West Mall Parking Lot Rehabilitation Project. Scope of the project involves all the work associated with the asphalt overlay of an existing concrete parking lot. The engineer's cost estimate of the project: $231,375. If the project is awarded, construction will begin on or before September 19th of 2016 with the stipulation that work must be either completed by or start after September 1 through 5 of 2016, so the project does not disrupt the Labor Day holiday shopping. The anticipated work completion time is 10 working days, so now's the time for anyone interested to express their opinions regarding the project plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost. So I'll open the public hearing at this time, if anyone would care to speak. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Does anyone have a motion supporting the planned specifications form of contract and estimated cost?
A moment.
Any discussion?
Oh, I keep saying, and you guys have said it too, but I'm hoping this gives us some kind of a discussion point with Hy-Vee. They're going to have a new parking lot, and we really don't want to own that parking lot, so, and I keep saying, I guarantee you that the only Hy-Vee that has a city parking lot, I'm pretty sure, but I could be wrong. That's it.
Okay, any other comments? Roll call, please.
Gates?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Calderick?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Moving on to item D. This is to consider a resolution awarding a contract for the West Mall Parking Lot Rehabilitation Project to Norris Asphalt Paving Company. The West Mall Parking Lot Rehab Project was advertised. Bits were received and publicly read on June 23rd. One bid was received. It was submitted by Norris Asphalt Paving in the amount of $209,760.50. This amount is lower than the engineer's estimate of $231,375. This project involves all the work associated with the asphalt overlay of an existing concrete parking lot. So if the project is awarded, construction will begin on or before September 19th of 2016. The stipulation that work must be completed by or start after September 1 through 5 of 2016, so the project doesn't disrupt the Labor Day holiday shopping, and the anticipated work completion time is 10 days. If the staff, or excuse me, if the council awards this construction contract, staff is recommending authorization for the city manager an additional 10% of the contract amount, which would be $21,000, as construction contingency for unforeseen circumstances, and also authorize the mayor to execute all related contract documents contingent upon receipt and approval of the insurance and bond documents. So do we have a motion supporting awarding the contract to Norris Asphalt?
A moment.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Burnett?
Yes.
Calderick?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item E, consider a resolution approving the 15th Avenue West and Edmondson Drive sidewalk project. The 15th Avenue West and Edmondson Drive sidewalk project has been prepared by staff as part of the active transportation plan. $50,000 is the total that was budgeted for the project 2010-92. The scope of the project involves the construction of approximately 500 feet of new public sidewalk along 15th Avenue West and Edmondson Drive. This new sidewalk will connect existing sidewalk along 15th Avenue West to existing sidewalk along Edmondson Drive and extend that sidewalk to the Edmondson Golf Course. This project also includes an alternate of an additional 225 feet of sidewalk from Edmondson Drive to the Golf Course Clubhouse, and there's an attached plan for details in the packet. The estimated cost of the project was $27,100, with an additional $6,000 for the alternate, giving a total estimated cost of $33,100. Competitive quotes for the project were received on Friday, June 24. The lowest quote came from TK Concrete for $22,875, plus $4,500 for the alternate, so the total project cost would be $27,375. If the council awards this construction contract, then staff is recommending authorizing the city manager an additional $5,500, which is about 20% of the contract, as construction contingency for unforeseen circumstances, and also authorize the mayor to execute all related contract documents contingent upon receipt and approval of the bond documents. Do we have a motion supporting this?
A moment.
Okay. Any discussion?
I have a question. The two sidewalks that are shown on the north and south of 15th Avenue West, I didn't drove that. I didn't see those there. I mean, maybe I was on the wrong street, but are they all there? Are we planning to put those in two?
The section that exists today is actually up there, west of what's proposed.
Okay, so those are sidewalks. We're putting them in on 15th Avenue West, too?
Yes.
Not just along Edmondson Drive?
Correct.
Right.
Correct.
Okay, that's where I was.
This is to kind of close the gap.
Okay.
From the subdivision that was developed. They didn't, obviously with the subdivision, the development requirements are sidewalks are included. These sections that were paved, or paving at this project were outside of that subdivision, and so.
But it's connectivity, right?
And it would be connectivity, correct.
Okay, so I thought those were shown as existing. Now then, my next question, and if I go up, it's not on the map there, but to the corner house on the, I guess it'd be the south side, after their driveway, it doesn't continue on around. There's a sidewalk on the other side of the street to where it would like to connect in, and right before you go into Harvest Point, but it's like there needs to be a little bit more done around the corner past their driveway. It just seems like there's still going to be a gap in the fence, or picket fence for that matter. Have we looked at that?
We'll take a look at that. I know there are not sidewalks that go all the way into Harvest.
Right, it stops, but right across from their property, there's an entrance, then it gets on the sidewalk that goes around to the rest of those, all those new homes up around there, but it wouldn't continue around the, on that property to get there.
Correct. This lane is not, if there's a gap there, it would not be paved that.
Okay.
We can look into that.
The owner is hooking up Harvest Point, though, right?
No, it's.
Edmondson.
Edmondson.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, yeah, I got you.
And I'm not sure that's entirely necessary, that walk to that clubhouse. You know, they walk in that driveway entrance there all the time, so I don't know that we need to spend the money on that.
Yeah, we proposed it as an alternate. Yeah, it's not probably typical what we would do, although if it was a new development, we'd probably provide connectivity. So I, it's an alternate. Council doesn't support it. We can pull it out, but.
So where does the alternate start? Is it just the east-west section?
Could be that, yes.
Just that's the alternate? Into the driveway?
100 and a half feet of it.
Are we expecting any more trouble than usual, that we're asking for 20% instead of 10%, or is it just because it's that amount of money?
Continuency.
Usually, the contingency that we ask is anywhere between 5 to 20%, depending on the magnitude of the project. Like Third Avenue East, we ask for 5%. That itself was close to about $100,000 of the contingency. Now, since this is a smaller project, we don't know what kind of surprises we may be seeing.
Because it's smaller, you're making it larger. Okay, thanks, Billy.
Any other comments or questions?
Did the motion include the alternative, or the alternate?
I think that was what was recommended by staff, and so I would interpret the motion to include the alternate. And see, who made the motion, Amy?
Calderick.
Okay. Was that your understanding, Joe?
Yeah, it is.
Okay, and the second?
It was with Steve, wasn't it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you're okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Tom, you had the comments, so.
Well, I'm not in favor of putting the sidewalk inside of Edmondson Park, you know, and then from the street to the clubhouse, I just don't think it's necessary right there.
To the degree of making a motion to change something?
Well, I would like to see it, but if I'm the only one against it, it doesn't make any difference to anyone, but.
You don't know if you're the only one against it, so we vote.
Well, there you go.
I know another non-sidewalk guy on this council that might be interested, too.
Well, I don't know that that's the place for a sidewalk right there.
I kind of agree with that.
Hearing no motion. Roll call.
Calderick?
Yes.
Jimenez?
No.
Moore?
Yes.
Percy?
No.
Walling?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Moving on. Item F is consider an ordinance to change the parking restrictions on Long Sea Avenue East from North 11th Street to South Park Avenue. It's the second reading. At their meeting on March 21st of 2016, city council directed staff to perform a study regarding the on-street parking restrictions along Sea Avenue East from North 11th Street to Park Avenue. Currently, a no-parking zone exists on the south side of Sea Avenue East from North 11th Street to 400 foot west of South Park Avenue, and so we've got that illustrated on figure one. The main concern was the visibility of vehicles exiting the hospital driveways due to the parked cars along the north side of Sea Avenue East. This section of Sea Avenue East is 31 feet in width, and that allows for parking on one side of the street but not both sides. In addition, current city code restricts parking only 10 feet either side of driveway or intersection approaches, which is not adequate for the visibility of the exiting hospital vehicles. So in order to alleviate visibility concerns for the exiting hospital traffic along the north side of Sea Avenue East, staff is recommended to restrict parking on the north side only, which is option one. This option will keep one side of the street available for on-street parking to accommodate the residents living on the south side of Sea Avenue East, and staff also recommends that parking should be restricted 50 foot on either side of the intersection of North 11th Street for the visibility of waiting vehicles at a two-way stop. There were seven crashes in the last five years on Sea Avenue East between 11th Street and Park Avenue, with six of those crashes at the intersection of Sea Avenue East and 11th Street, and one crash at the mid-block section of the road segment. Although not a part of the traffic engineering analysis for parking studies, the survey responses from property owners are attached separately as part of the packet here. Planning and zoning commission at their meeting on May 9th voted six yes to one no in favor of a different option, option two, to restrict parking 50 feet on both sides of the easternmost driveway approaches to the hospital and to leave the parking restriction along the south side of Sea Avenue East. They also recommended parking restriction 50 foot east and west of the North 11th Street on the north side of Sea Avenue East for the two-way stop visibility. So attached figures 1 through 3, or 1-3, depict the details of the current parking restrictions and each recommended option. At the June 20th of 2016 city council meeting, the city council approved the first reading of the ordinance pertaining to option two.
The pictures are labeled correctly. It's option two, it's option two.
So, reading the proposed ordinance, so it would be Sea Avenue East on the north side from 50 feet west of 11th Street to 325 feet west of South Park Avenue, and then it says 159 Sea Avenue East on the south side from 11th Street to 50 feet east of 11th Street. So there was some confusion before the meeting that I was having with one of the council members, what we voted in on the last meeting. So is the one that we see, this one is what's voted in?
And there's still no parking restrictions on either side on the east end.
Right.
Correct?
Do we have a motion supporting option two? Okay? Okay? Got a motion, a second? Comment, Terry?
Just on the accidents, because that was one of the things we asked for, because I think, at least from my perspective, we were trying to decide whether the other exits from the hospital parking besides the one that Edmond uses was an issue. So, there was only one that was in the mid-block. Do we know if it had to do with a vehicle leaving those parking lots and a visibility issue, or has it just happened during the mid-block?
I don't know the answer to that. So we have to check back to Ed and check on vacations.
Okay. And then the, when I look at the graph, when it talks about the severity of the ones that happened, what do those two things mean? It looks like it's either unknown or...
Property damage only.
Property damage, okay. Thank you, I didn't know what that meant. Potentially by the third reading, could we know about that one accident if it was a visibility issue? Because that may impact whether we want to do something around that last accident. Or those other accidents?
Well, there's two other ones, but actually one, I think is supposed to be an in.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
If you follow the signs.
In only.
The middle one is an in only.
Yeah.
And I think the far west one is an out.
Is an out, that's right.
So that would be a visibility issue, potentially.
But no ambulance.
Well, I've seen them come out the, I've seen them come out that one too, so.
The ambulance?
No, no, no. People.
No, yeah, you can. All you gotta do is take a lap when you get there.
Yeah.
But I mean, that parking lot runs north, and yeah, so, and I could do.
No, you're right on that one.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, we got a motion for support. Roll call, please.
Jimenez.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Perse.
Yes.
Walling.
Yes.
Yates.
Yes.
Burnett.
Yes.
Alderick.
Yes.
Jimenez.
Yes.
That passes. Item G, consider an ordinance amending the Oskaloosa Municipal Code, Chapter 12.08, by adding Sections 12.08.110 relating to requirements for temporary closure of streets for special events. This would be the first reading. Presently, temporary closure of streets for special events requires full City Council approval. Staff is requesting an amendment to the Oskaloosa Municipal Code granting authority to the city manager or his or her designee to close public streets for short temporary periods not exceeding 24 hours for special events without the necessity of obtaining the formal City Council approval. Do we have a motion of support for this?
No.
Okay, any discussion? Current turnaround time, if somebody does want to have a street closed for a one-time event, let's say it's Friday after 5:00. That is a fairly lengthy process where they have to do the application, and then it has to go through a reading resolution by the council. So it can take a couple of weeks for that to occur, where presumably this could happen as easily as, you know...
In 72 hours, generally.
Okay.
Usually, if it's something increased rate board, it could be 24 hours. It's a lot of the same recurring items that come into us, and they show up here, we put them on consent. Very rarely are they discussed or debated. I think, yeah, I get it behind this particular code changes, just to get us in line with council discussions of passage, which are how do we, how do we make this easier for people that want to utilize either a street or park or have an event within the community? And this is just one of those opportunities for us to do that. The code just doesn't allow us to do that. It has to come to you. So, this is our proposed solution to that problem.
Now, in the past, I know we've had similar discussions, like for events that Mr. Duckey has asked for in the pub, and we've said we can't do that. It has to come before us because I think having something to do with the state liquor license and... There were some special conditions with that. I may not be right on exactly what it is. Is there any of those that apply to these, if they involve alcohol or anything, that would still need to come to us?
Anything that would still, yeah, like, yes, is the short answer. It's required by the liquor board to have approval, so defining their boundaries or enlarging the boundaries of the service area, and yes, it still requires approval. Again, in some communities, that's a good thing. Here, we haven't really had, thankfully, too many problems. So only when it's absolutely necessary, we can bring those to council. There are events that are held by a particular establishment, that we handle administratively. Based on past practice, we haven't had any issues, and that was council's feeling as well. You don't necessarily have to keep bringing these back, we're comfortable going to move them, so administratively, we do.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Moore.
Yes.
Perse.
Yes.
Walling.
Yes.
Yates.
Yes.
Burnett.
Yes.
Alderick.
Yes.
Jimenez.
Yes.
That passes. Gets us to the end of the agenda, reports from city staff, city manager, anything?
Uh, I don't remember if they're going to do the regulations.
Okay. City clerk, anything?
Nothing.
City attorney?
Thank you.
Okay. Go on down the line. Joe, anything from you?
Nothing.
Okay, Aaron?
Nothing.
Scotty?
Nothing.
Tom?
Nothing.
Tom?
What do you want to say, then? About the cemetery? You're here.
Okay, sure.
It was in the consent agenda, so...
I'd love to just briefly...
Cut the mail, he's a card.
It's good with me.
And it will be brief.
That's okay, we're just hoping.
The second week of May, we had a...
Yeah, you gotta be in front of the microphone.
The second week of May, we had a very, very thorough audit by the Division of the State Insurance Department that deals with cemeteries. And I think it's the first audit that's been done for a number of years. There were some new people involved in the insurance department that had more energy and requested more material than has ever been requested in the past. We were complimented for making the material available, it was financial records going back several years, our handling of items through the cemetery that, consistent with the Iowa code, were doing it by law, and they were complimentary about our handling of the protective care monies and how that's being done now. We haven't received an official response from them, but the unofficial emails coming back were very complimentary to us. The only reason I bring that up is I don't think the city is going to be getting a letter from the State Insurance Department saying, "You've got to deal with the cemetery thing." I think they're very happy with the way things are going. I just wanted to share that. Financially, comparing the current 12 months with the past 12 months, things are about the same. We're up a couple thousand on lot sales, we're down about 4,000 on monument foundations. And in trying to kind of understand that a little bit, we had, a year ago, we had a couple of very large memorials put in by out-of-town monument companies that generated... One generated about 2,000 to us, and one was about 1,200, so, or, excuse me. Being down about 4,000 in that category is not, I don't think is a concern. Your help with us is allowing us to go on to some other things rather than just worrying about how are we going to meet payroll in two days and some things like that. We're not generating a big profit. The current financial statement that I shared with you, it shows about a $10,000 profit. Mind you, that's a report that comes out of the QuickBooks computer program, and in the end-of-year financial statements, the accountant will come in with about 28,000 or 29,000 of depreciation, so that 10,000 profit will become about a $20,000 loss. There are some other adjustments they make on the QuickBooks entries that just cleaned them up a little bit. They're reasonably accurate, but the statement that I gave to you is called Profit and Loss, and it basically is simply a record of the money we've taken in, the revenues we've taken in these past 12 months, and the expenses that we've paid out the last 12 months. We had a break-in, and our total theft amount amounted to about $1,850 or something like that. I recall the exact amount, and it had a 5, we had a 500 deductible on our coverage. So, that generated an entry of the check that we got from the insurance department was about $1,350. Okay? QuickBooks moves that around, and it shows a couple of minus entries, a plus entry, and indicates a profit of about, what, 2,000 or something like that? Well, that's not accurate, but that's simply because of the way QuickBooks dealt with it. All we did was enter our check from the insurance company for $1,350. So, there's some things like that that get cleaned up and sanitized on our financial statements. Our end-of-year fiscal year will be July 31st, so our financial statements will be coming in a couple of months. Any questions? We're grateful for your help.
Thank you, Gordon.
Thanks, Gordon.
Thank you for noticing that, Tom. Anything else?
Alderick.
Okay? Steve? Okay? Well, that gets to me. If you would please take one of these and pass it down likewise over here. Wanted to take a moment and kind of bring the council up to speed on one of several projects I'm involved in, but this one has to do with the recreation and early childhood education facility. That, you know, you may remember that we've had the votes that have taken place for local option sales tax, and so there's roughly $18 million worth of funding that can be worked with to create this facility. So, with that in mind, it's time to start designing and putting that together. I've called together a number of people onto the committee. Myself, Doug Gates, and Tom Walling are all on the committee. We also have Russ Ryder showing up to meetings representing the Oskaloosa Schools, Mark Cardledge, the interim CEO of the YMCA, and Tori Schrock are both there. And then Juan Mahaska has Linda Crookham Hansen and Beth Tenoski there as well. I think I've got everybody in the room.
YMCA board members.
Oh, yes. Yes, Linda and Tori are both YMCA board members as well.
And Mike.
And I am here, and I am listed.
Yes.
Just a quick clarification about the Juan Mahaska, it's the YMCA.
YMCA, okay. So, so we're working on a building with an $18 million budget. One of the early things that was told us by the interim CEO is that the building that we had designed, $24 million worth, he was saying, "Well, the YMCA nationwide builds a number of YMCA's, and it's not uncommon for them to get built for about $11 million." And so if we could find a way to do the childcare, early education piece for about seven, we're on our way. And so, we are listening to some of the counsel we're receiving on what some of the best practices are for the construction of a facility such as this. We also spent a significant amount of time talking about the sustainability of this, that, you know, you can build a great facility, and it was built with public input. If you think about all of the public questionnaires that were out there, all the input that was received, the building design at $24 million had everything everybody was asking for in it. We're going to go back to the public another time, asking, okay, now that we know that $24 million is what we thought it was going to cost for you to have everything you want, what is it that you really, really want? And so hopefully, we'll have the kind of guidance from the public to be able to tell us what the highest priorities are going to be, so that we can design the facility in that manner. With that in mind, we also understand that there are some best practices out there as well. And so we have been talking with architects, we're also getting input from a variety of sources, saying, you know, we can provide some input. In the case of YUSA, they have an outfit called Grow that comes in as an advisor to architects to be able to say, "These are the way you build gymnasiums, these are the way you build locker rooms." And so you can save a lot of steps and avoid a lot of mistakes that way. So, where we are as a committee, in the handout that I gave you, we have had met a number of times already, we've had, I believe, three meetings. And so, as far as our next steps, the update to the City Council and the school boards are taking place tonight, and then the school board will get their update on July 12th. As far as working on getting the public input, we're selecting, in the process of selecting a firm that will handle that, and then they will work with the architect, and that selection process is happening at the same time, so that once we figure out for sure what's going into this building, then we'll be able to design it appropriately. If you look at the schedule that we have here, it's pretty aggressive, that on July 11th, we have interviews as far as the public relations firm that's going to be doing the questionnaires and preparing contracts for services, and then also, as far as the recommendation to the City Council, that's going to happen on July 18th. So it's clicking along pretty good. And then as far as the RFQ drafting, it mentions in there that we should have responses by August 1st for the architect doing the interviews on August 8 through 12, and then hopefully getting together and figuring out our recommendation for the architect at that point. So all that happening this summer. There will also be, a number of the committee members are putting together field trips where we'll be looking at other YMCA and community recreation facilities with the intention of building ours to fit our community using the best practices that we observed from some other communities. That's what's going on. Do you have any questions of the committee members or of Mike?
And talk about one...
Including Mike.
Sorry, may you talk about one and shovel up any ground?
Back when the original vote took place, the idea was that you could have shovels into the, let's see, shovels into the ground, I believe was January of 2019, or was that completed facility?
I think we're looking at completion, a complete facility.
Okay. So, if you think about, you know, that took place in May, and so, since the answer was no to the complete package, every month that goes by pushes that January of 2019 back that much further. So we're probably still talking a facility that could be built and open in mid to late 2019 if we keep things moving.
We can start till in 2018.
Yeah, yeah.
I'd be really interested in the responses the general public gives out, what they're really interested in now that you've decided there's probably not going to be a pool in that facility, so, is that correct, or what?
Well, there hasn't been an official design yet. One of the things I'm pushing for is that one of the questions we would ask is, should a recreational pool be in that facility? If so, should we keep the recreation pool at Edmondson Park open? That was a fairly controversial thing back when the discussion was going on and the vote was being held. So as far as I'm concerned, let's go ahead and get input from the public, as long as we're asking them the questions anyway.
On Edmondson?
Yep.
And then recreation also at this new facility, or would that be a competition pool?
Well, as if you remember the original blueprints, it had both.
I know.
And so, if, you know, if a person, or if the public tells us that they don't need a recreation pool inside that facility, then we build accordingly. If the public wants to have a recreational pool that is accessible year-round, it strikes me as that that's the better use of public money, but I'm willing to listen.
Sure.
And I think the committee is as well.
I guess, Tom, and for others, you know, at our work session six, eight weeks ago, I expressed concern about doing another market analysis survey, just for some reason, I thought we'd be spending more dollars after we had did that already. And as we continued to meet as a committee, I got more comfortable with doing it for the simple reason, I look at it as a refinement of what we need to build, and just as importantly, or more importantly, what people are going to be willing to join it, so that then it's sustainable long-term. So, we don't have $24 million, number one, and whatever we do spend the 18 on, it's got to be what people are willing to join, so that we can have membership dollars. So, again, for me, the last few meetings of the committee has been very helpful to get comfortable with moving forward that analysis, to not only learn about whether we need pools or whatever else should be in there, we need to build what people are going to want to use and what they're going to be willing to join.
With an aggressive timeline of that nature, are you going to be able to get input from the general public as a whole?
Well, this is just to get the firm on board by this timeline, and then we're going to give them the time they need to do the study appropriately, which we talked about, 60 to 90 days, so that we do get that input and not just give it a whitewash.
It's somewhat of a step back, but we're still moving forward. But it's not a push, Tom. Well, I think it needs to be stepped back. There should be a time to give better, good input. You know, we had a positive vote in the town. Absolutely. So what those people, and that's what Doug's saying, what those, when they voted yes, what did they expect to see? Well, that's what I want them to see yet, is what they expect to see, you know, and that's why we need general, input from the general public as well, not just maybe Y members or a narrow field, we need wide field.
What are they going to use?
Yeah, that's right.
We need to know what they're going to need, so.
Other question, how is this survey going to be conducted? Have you talked about that yet, as far as...
That's the...
That's part of the proposal. We've got several people bringing us proposals, and we're going to be evaluating, I mean, that's what they do, these firms, but we're going to be evaluating as a committee how they're going to conduct that, so that we hopefully will make sure we get the information we need.
But this might be a good time to ask. Do you have a preference, or do you...
Well, I'm just concerned, folks, you know, a lot of people are into electronics and got computers, but there are some out there that don't. They have their ways of doing things in life, but doing the survey electronically or by mail, however, that way cover a good broad base of the community, I think. You know? Just a thought.
Absolutely. I guess I would envision they would use multiple forms, phone, mail, internet, whatever, just so we get the information.
Yeah, hard copy at the library comes to mind. City Hall. Any other questions? Okay, that's all I had. With that, do we have a motion for adjournment?
Move second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, that's all I had. With that, do we have a motion for adjournment?
Move second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.